Great. Good morning. It is Monday, November 16th, 2020, and the time is 10:00 a.m., and this is the regularly scheduled city council work session. And as we've been doing all city council work sessions since March, this council meeting is available on Zoom, and this morning, all individuals are joining by Zoom, not only city councilors and city staff, but guests as well. And we're going to be doing that going forward for the foreseeable future. So that'll also be the format of tomorrow night's city council meeting. With that, I'll go ahead and we'll get started. We have a discussion item for today, which is Discussion Item A, and that is revisions to Title VI of the Municipal Code. So welcome to our work session to Assistant City Attorneys Rachel Allen and Matt Magliaro. Did I say that right, Matt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the city council and members of the public who may be with us via Zoom. My name is Matt Magliaro. I'm the Assistant City Attorney for Public Safety. I'm joined today by my colleague, Assistant City Attorney Rachel Allen. We will be co-presenting today on a proposal for some updates to Title VI of the Montrose Municipal Code. The structure of the presentation, we're going to go through a brief history of the project within our department and the approach we took in drafting in general, an executive summary of the proposed code and changes and additions, and then we're going to be proceeding section by section with Q and A as we go. Project history, Legal began looking at a code update specifically to the Trespass Ordinance 6-1-11 approximately a year ago in 2019, previous to the COVID-19 outbreak. This was in response to some specific cases at trial within Montrose Municipal Court and concerns brought forward with case filings with enforcing the ordinance in court as drafted, which we'll discuss in a moment. We broadened the scope of the code update to address some other provisions to where it now covers those in the working draft that went out in the packets, and that's before you. Our approach to drafting, just in general, was we had three main goals or tent posts that guided us. First, that it provide clear guidance to the public from the language chosen, so it provides a fair warning of prohibited conduct, so that individuals may conform their behavior accordingly, a clear standard to agency practitioners in the field here, that's the Montrose Police Department, sworn staff, lawyers, both prosecutors and defense counsel, as well as the court, that sufficiently precise so as to avoid arbitrary and capricious enforcement. Both of these, the first two are required by a matter of procedural due process for drafting criminal statutes as we're legislating in a constitutional system with a constitution that constrains and guides legislative power and legislative choices. A third, that the legislation be able to survive judicial review, both by the trial court and any higher court. Stakeholders that we consulted throughout the course of the project internally, of course, within our department, Rachel and I worked on this together. Our department has also met with the Montrose Municipal Court and its staff. We had a number of working meetings, both pre and post-COVID. Judge Brown referenced this project and code update in his report to council dated October 15th of this year. The Montrose Police Department command staff were briefed on this, both commanders and Chief Hall, by me. In addition, it's my understanding it was disseminated within the department to sergeant-level officers and above for review and comment. One section of the proposed draft in front of you, the indecent conduct, I reached out to some of my former colleagues at the District Attorney's Office in the Special Crime Victims Unit for their help and assistance, and did receive some guidance from them, and now in this form to city council and to the public. Executive summary, this before you affects or adds six provisions of the code. In general, it adds a new Section 6-1-5.5 to define mental states for offenses consistent with the Colorado Revised Statutes. It repeals and replaces with reenactment the Trespass Ordinance 6-1-11 to fix a number of structural and enforcement problems that were presented in court without ordinance as drafted. It repeals in full unlawful entry 6-1-10 and window peeping 6-1-12. It folds and consolidates those into the new trespass 6-1-11. And we'll talk about certain sections of that that do that, particularly the window peeping provision. The revision repeals and reenacts the indecent conduct ordinance to cover overt sexual acts in public and largely mirrors CRS 187301, which is the state public indecency statute. At last, the revision includes a change to Montrose Code 6-6-1 for open burning recreational fires that removed language limiting the authorization for residential recreational fires only to those for the purpose of cooking food, and it was a clarification added intended to more closely mirror how it's being enforced in the city. A severability and savings clause is also put in as a section of the ordinance and drafted in the language. This is also covered in Article II, Section 11 of the council procedure that affords a severability construction to ordinances. I will start with a couple mental states. Numerically, it's first, even though it's not in the packet, it's pages six and seven in the packet. This is a definitional section. It adds definitions of the four model penal code mental states of intentionally with intent, knowingly or willfully, recklessly, and criminal negligence, four offenses defined in the Montrose Municipal Code, also defined as culpable mental state and voluntary act. These definitions are drawn from CRS 181501, which in turn are drawn from the Model Penal Code definitions used throughout criminal jurisdictions in the United States. This sets up a hierarchical system of culpable mental states in which the with intent or intentionally is the most, is the highest mental state, most culpable. Knowing is the next most culpable, recklessly is the next most culpable, and with criminal negligence is least culpable mental state. The placement and the odd numbering, I'll explain. It was intended to be placed after the theories of criminal liability and the in-code offenses within our codes, so criminal attempt and accessory, but before any of the substantive code provision or substantive crimes. That explains the .5 numbering. I know it's a little unusual, but that's, it was intended to be placed before the substantive crimes are listed out in the code. The existing code violations in Title VI do specify mental states, so I'll just give two examples. Petty theft 6-1-7 specifies a knowingly obtained or exercised control over a thing of value of another with intent to permanently deprive. Also, a disorderly conduct statute, for example, 6-114 states it's unlawful for any person to intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly, and then goes on to list a number of subsections. That's the same introductory language as 1891061, disorderly conduct in the Colorado Revised Statute. The existing Montrose Municipal Code does not have a definition for either recklessly or with intent. It does have definitions for knowingly, and then separately for willfully, and then a definition of negligence, but not criminal negligence, within Chapter 1.1. These code provisions, for a look at the code history, it looks like these definitions came in in the 1968 code, so possibly even prior to the Model Penal Code being enacted, and it was re-promulgated with the rest of the section in 2012. The definitions, I don't think, would be proper for use in a criminal prosecution. So accordingly, staff is recommending that we adopt the four mental states and then the definition of culpable mental state and voluntary act. One provision to note, and we may tinker with the language here in the working draft, is for expanding out culpable mental states, there was a recent Colorado Supreme Court case called People v. Rigsby, which interpreted another provision of the code or language in 181503 Sub 3 that set out basically this hierarchy, and that this is the hierarchy of these, where with intent was proved, necessarily proved knowingly or recklessly, the lower mental states. So we may be expanding that piece of it out, and I just wanted to provide that as a highlight to council. I think that's the sum of it for new Section 6-1-5.5.
All right. So as you can see on page three in our work session packet today, we are kind of reinvent, well, we're revamping our trespass and making it a little bit more user-friendly for everyone. The city has encountered cases involving parks and public bathrooms that have come to light that have been almost difficult or impossible to prosecute under our current 6-1-10 unlawful entry and 6-1-11 trespass. Folding unlawful entry into trespass brings us up to date with case law and the Colorado Revised Statutes, Colorado law, specifically CRS 184503 second-degree trespass. This makes this clearer for everyone and more enforceable within the state. Also, this language was crafted by looking at other nearby municipal codes and to make it understandable and usable in municipal court. So just to walk through trespass quickly here, and I will note this is a working draft. We have in Provision A1, the language of unlawful entering or remaining. This mirrors the Colorado Revised Statutory Language. It's defined lower in 6-1-11B5. I'll just put a pin in that. We will be expanding that a little bit to go along with jury instructions, and I'll explain that language when we get down to it. But again, just clarifying it, making it clearer for defendants, prosecutors, and the court itself. Just a few other highlights here in this language. You'll see in subsection A3. Unfortunately, and this is an error on my behalf, it's not redlined. This is new language, and this language addresses specifically public buildings or public structures. And this closes that loophole that we are having regarding public buildings, city bathrooms, that we've had trouble with in municipal court. There's been confusion and trouble prosecuting those cases. So in this scenario, it would be, you know, a case involving the unlawful entry and having knowledge that he or she is without permission to remain in or on a public building or public structure when such building or structure is closed to the public and/or locked. A few other things to highlight as we go down, you'll see subsection 8. Now, this is our old unlawful entry. This folds in 6-1-10. It's now at A8 and B. That brings us to subsection 9, which I'll let Matt take over.
Thank you. So subsection 9 is our consolidation of the window peeping. Code provision 6-1-12 into the new trespass, look at page 5, it's 9A, and then 9B sets out a poundly provision. I'll talk predominantly about 9A. But first, I'm going to talk a little bit about the existing or current code. Current code is, window peeping, I'll read it. "It shall be unlawful for any person to enter or remain upon the property of another with the intent to peer or peep into any window of a dwelling of another." Couple of things. This provision's written very broadly, which is problematic or can be problematic from an enforcement perspective. An officer in the field is without a lot of guidance from the language used here to make enforcement decisions, and accordingly, it's been rarely cited in our court. The last six months where we've had active docket, I haven't seen a citation for this. And from speaking with the clerks and the judicial staff, there've only been a couple citations in the last past six years or so that anyone can remember, and those were resolved, they were well within the prescriptive bounds of kind of the core conduct, and they were resolved by plea. From Legal's perspective, should this be cited and challenged, it would be difficult to sustain through judicial review and over a constitutional challenge due to how broad it is. Accordingly, staff is recommending a repeal and consolidation with the trespass. A couple of things to highlight. We asked ourselves, and taking a look at this provision, what's the core conduct that we're really trying to regulate here? And really, it appeared to us to be a trespass on a property to further an invasion into someone else's reasonable expectation of privacy without their consent. So based on some of this language, and we looked at code provisions elsewhere, the city of Durango, for example, has its own freestanding window peeping code. So we did take a look at that. Couple of things to highlight in 9A. The enter or remain continues to be disjunctive, which is consistent with the current code for 6-1-12. A knowingly mental state is applied, and then the further conduct, so to look into any window, doors, skylight, or other opening of a dwelling of another. Unlike current code, attendant circumstances are specified. It has to be a situation where the person has a reasonable expectation of privacy, and it has to be without the consent of that person. And then there's some other further definitional sections within that as the tenant circumstances. My understanding is that there is a question regarding whether or not someone violates the statute by intruding upon the private property of another using electronic means or an device. So Councilman Anderson, I believe that was your question?
Yeah, yeah. I wondered about drones. I mean, I can fly a drone and look in your window without being on your property, and I wondered how that would be regulated or prevented.
It's an interesting question because drones are regulated by federal law in some respects, and there, also there are state laws that could be violated with doing that. Potentially, it's an interpretation question for the court whether or not entering or remaining upon another's dwelling can be achieved by a foreign electronic device that someone compels or sends onto someone else's private property. It depends on how a court would interpret the enter and remain definition, as well as the main statutory definition, 9A, to whether or not that sort of invasion could be actionable under the code. I could say that in the Fourth Amendment context, for example, the Supreme Court, in recent case law, has looked to a physical intrusion to insert a GPS unit, where that's regulatable under the Fourth Amendment. Now, it's considered a Fourth Amendment intrusion. I think an argument would be similar, that someone is compelling a device to enter or remain upon someone else's property. I'll point out, there's a couple other things that led to some thinking about, what do you do with a guy with a spotting scope that may be on a public roadway? It's not upon someone's house, or a telephoto lens, camera. Those situations, that sort of example would not be covered. The element still required that a person enter or remain onto the private property of another. The drone example, I think, could be, but it depends upon how the court interprets the language, given the evolving technology. I'd also note that federal law, at least, hasn't necessarily caught up to this. I looked at the FAA Reauthorization Act of 2018. They did pass two criminal statutes within that. That was 18U.S.C. 39A and 40B, I think. One was wildfires using a drone unauthorized manner, and they call it unmanned aircraft. The other was using it near an airport. There wasn't anything about expressly intrusion upon a right to privacy. I will say that on our current code, there is a law against, the state code, there's a law against invasion of privacy for sexual gratification under 1834 or 5.6. That's a Class 1 misdemeanor offense, a subject to extraordinary risk sentencing, so it's six to 24 months in jail, would be the possible jail penalties for that. And depending on the circumstances, if there's a prior conviction like, or if it's involving a person under the age of 15, that could be an F6. They define that as observing or photography, and photography is defined in part as a live feed. So if someone sends up a drone that has a live web camera or video camera on it that's intended to go to a device or broadcast over the internet in some way, and there's a further intent that can be proven beyond reasonable doubt that is for the observer's sexual gratification, that could be, depending on the circumstances, either an M1 under our code or an F6. There's also potentially the coverage under 187801, which is the invasion of privacy, which is also in the code. That sets forth a Class 2 misdemeanor, and it has a similar definition of photography, where that could conceivably cover drones. So there's some provisions in state law that could cover that situation. If it was, I could say that if it's the situation that would give rise to an F6 where there's that further proof of the observer's own sexual gratification that can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt, I would want officers to cite that in the Montrose Combined Court as the F6, because that's a registrable offense. Is that responsive?
Yeah, I had a hard time following everything you said, but as long as you're comfortable that you could prosecute somebody, you know, peeping in the window with a drone, then I'm happy. That's, I just wanted to make sure that, because we had an incident a few years ago, and I don't know that they were window peeping, but there was a lady downtown, and somebody was just buzzing around her, being very annoying with a drone, and it was kind of an invasion of privacy in my mind as a lay guy. So I just think that drones can be problematic, and when I read this text, you know, I'm not standing on your property, even though I might be looking in your window. So that was all my concern was.
Matt, before we get to Counselor Frank's question, I would say, Roy, that we can't specifically control drones. However, we can use existing code to address the problem they cause. So if they're using for peeping, we can use existing laws to try and prosecute. Just as we learned with like the public bathrooms and people living in them, we may have to tweak it based on how the court interprets, but I think we have the tools necessary for that first round. It is going to be tricky if they're using high-powered optics on a drone, and they are, you know, a quarter mile away. But it's very much like the court has never satisfactorily been able to deal with what happens with the guy on a sidewalk with a pair of binoculars looking into somebody's window. That's something that we've never gotten satisfaction from the courts, and we could have some similar problems like that, where you're actually quite a ways away, but you're using technology to peer in.
I guess at some point, it's my responsibility to close the curtain, so. Yeah, I get the FAA thing with drones, and so I'm satisfied. You guys are probably doing a great job covering all these bases, so thanks for addressing my concern.
And Counselor Frank, I'm not sure if Matt had noticed that you had a question.
I didn't want to interrupt you while you were talking. You have changed in the prior sections in 6-1-1A, all the way through that section, to say unlawfully entering and remaining. Would we be wise to utilize that same language in 9A? Because if you're revising that other language, it would seem to be, I think, a good idea to maintain that consistency. So 9A would be unlawfully entering or remaining on private property.
That's a fine change. Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Is that all? Is that all from our Assistant City Attorneys?
That's all. That particular section, we have indecent conduct 6-1-15, and then the fire 6-6.
Right. Okay. Continue.
So indecent conduct's on page seven through eight. And our current code only prohibits urination and defecation in any public, any place within city limits, except certain sanitary facilities. That's fairly broad language as well. It encompassed both public and private property and include property owned by the particular defendant. There was also, we heard from the court and heard that there was a hole in the code for cases involving overt but consensual public sexualized acts, which in the past have been cited incorrectly into Montrose Municipal Court. So accordingly, in developing this, we looked to the public indecency statute, 187301, and some of the interpretive case law for that, particularly, and what guided us was People v. Graves, which is a Colorado decision, Colorado Supreme Court, from 2016 that interpreted and looked at the public indecency code under CRS and one specific provision over constitutional challenges for overbreadth and void for vagueness, which is a due process challenge. We also looked at codes throughout the state, particularly municipal ordinances from Denver, Grand Junction, Durango, and a few other spots. Just in general, in approaching this one, to avoid conduct that was subject to registration under the Colorado Sex Offender Registration Act, the reason for that is we're not a court of record in the Montrose Municipal Court, and to prove a failure or crime, a failure to register as a sex offender, you would need both documentation in written form, as well as typically pulling the minutes of the court proceedings or record of the court proceedings to ensure proper advisement. Also, it was unclear whether or not our current code under MC1-1-14 would authorize the Montrose Municipal Court to order sex offender registration, just to begin with. So accordingly, we wanted to avoid conduct that would fall or be subject to registration under that provision. The public indecency statute in state code is a Class 1 petty offense. The proposal before you would make this an unclassified code violation, which is actually a higher penalty for second or subsequent offenses that can rise to a Class 6 felony in state law, but this is for, since your first offense. So that was kind of the approach we, in guiding, receiving the guidance from People v. Graves and their look at the public indecency statute, essentially, we're conforming a lot of our indecent conduct code to the public indecency statute within state law. And then there was some cleanup done to the existing code, which appears as new number five, to add some additional attendant circumstances. And that's all I think I have on that one, unless there's any questions.
All right. And so the final pages, eight and nine, of our draft we have before you is to govern, essentially, recreational fires. As currently stated, backyard fires are limited to cooking. But what about the fire pits that a lot of residents have in their backyard that they enjoy on a cool evening? Technically, you need a compliance marshmallow to satisfy the cooking piece of that. So we've updated the code language to reflect the current enforcement and to allow for recreational fires as defined by the International Fire Code. So you'll see that in 661D. The safety provisions are still included, such as limiting the scope, intensity, and duration, having a fire extinguisher nearby with someone who knows how to use it, and also have it subject to fire restrictions from county and state. Those are included in B1 through 4.
Thank you both very much. Does anyone have any questions? Seems like we got our chance to ask our questions as we went along.
Barbara, could I give, could I give a kind of a synopsis for both council and for everybody else? Because we had a bunch of kind of legalese. So things we're trying to address that we've learned kind of the hard way in court. You can't go and disable a parked bathroom lock and then move your stuff in and then spend multiple days there. That's what, trying to put those restrictions on, you know, park buildings and city buildings. You can't get drunk at a bar and then go have sex on the sidewalk on Main Street. Another thing that, you know, we're trying to deal with. And then everybody, not everybody, but Bill and I, for starters, have our fire pits in the backyard, and like everybody else in town, we can do it in a responsible manner when the fire department says that it's safe to do so. Right now, we have to have a hot dog handy or a marshmallow handy, because that way you're cooking, you're using the fire to cook with food. That's just kind of silly, nor have we been enforcing that. So we're trying to add a little bit of common sense to the fire pit, and that doesn't mean that you can be burning trash. It's clear that that's not allowed. You can't have one of those fires that is super tall or high. That's going to be a risk to yourself or to your neighborhood. So we will, this gives us the ability to have more specific criteria and then be able to have our code enforcement enforce it in a more meaningful way.
Thank you. Any questions? Anything from the police department? Chief Paul, that needs to be said on any of this? It sounds like our lawyers consulted and worked with your department.
They did, and I appreciate all their hard work. It is a lot of legalese, but for boots on the ground, the statutes, the way they were written prior, really actually were causing some issues as far as our ability to really just take care of the issues at hand. And so I really appreciate our legal team's hard work and making this more in line with Colorado revised statutes. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. To our assistant city attorneys, you guys both mentioned that this is a draft, that it's still a work in progress. So will we see it again at a work session? Or the next time we see it, will it be at a city council meeting?
What we can do is we don't have any major substantive edits, just a few tweaks and a little bit of language to add in to kind of round it out. My plan is to have this with a red line and a clean version before you at a city council meeting, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Yeah, we usually see a red line at the council meeting of what the current code says and what the new proposed code says. Is there a way you can do that and show us what changes were made between today's work session and the council meeting? Even if you're just highlight them verbally as we go through them. Does that make sense?
We could put those in a different color, Barbara. It'll be stuff like Dave Frank's suggestion. There is a recent Supreme Court case that hit last month that we need to do a tweak to. So we can catch the one paragraph that didn't get read, didn't get redlined. So those will all be red, and then the new ones, we'll, I don't like to micromanage what color Rachel will choose, but she'll choose some other color to indicate those few things that have changed between what you saw right now and then what you'll see at a city council meeting.
That would be really helpful, because I think when we go through it with a fine-tooth comb and we're looking at it, we don't want to spend our time comparing original code, proposed at work session code, what we're voting on code. And it just should be pretty obvious to us, so we can really focus on the language and not so much trying to catch a change. Does that make sense? Thanks. Appreciate it. Any other questions from the fellow council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll close out this discussion item, which moves us on to general city council discussion. And we don't have anything specific other than to go around the virtual room and check in both with our city counselors and with any department heads who need to provide counsel with an update. So I'll take volunteers first, and then I'll start calling on people. Mayor Pro Tim Glassbell, I see your hand went up.
I'd just like to comment on the opportunity you and I had to go down to the food bank and help out the other day. It was actually fun, thoroughly enjoyed it, recommend it to everyone. That's all I have.
We did. We had a great time. We were there because they just serve organization, which partners volunteer opportunities in our community with folks who want to volunteer, was there to facilitate the annual award that went to Sharing Ministries this year. And so we were there for a small award ceremony and then stayed and helped move pallets of food and mark them. And one thing I learned that morning is that they continue to see a lot of need for food insecurity in our community, but have struggled with volunteers. They have a lot of senior volunteers who are electing to stay home, and they have a lot of school groups who are not able to currently come. And that anyone who wants to can volunteer at Sharing Ministries. It's super easy. Even Doug and I can do it. So we did, we had fun. So little plug there for if anyone's looking for a volunteer opportunity over the break. Doesn't require a lot of training or anything. Okay, I think I saw Counselor Frank's hand go up as well. No. There, Chief Paul.
It's been a while since I've given one of those crime updates. And I just wanted to maybe focus everyone's attention just to some things that have happened in last week within PD. In the justice last weekend, we've had definitely an increase in the amount of encounters where we've had to lay hands on individuals. We had an incident this weekend, a suicidal male. And when the officer walked out of the elevator, the male was right outside the elevator, holding a knife to his throat. That ended without, the male was successfully talked down and placed in custody for a mental health evaluation. This weekend, we had a pretty large fight where two of our officers tried to break up the fight, and subsequently, one of our officers was punched in the side of the head. Those individuals, ultimately, we had to use our tasers to end that incident. Our detectives have also been extremely busy. You may have seen in the daily press. We had a month's long investigation dealing with five, at the time, they were children, ages five to fifteen. And we subsequently arrested a male relating to sexual assault that was going on for years with all of these children. And then we've also been very busy with some other very high-profile cases, which detectives are working. So things definitely haven't slowed down for us, but it just seems right now that there are, we're responding to things that are little, that seem to be at least little in nature, whether that's a neighborhood dispute or a neighbor dispute, or maybe a traffic stop. And that ends in some type of hands-on encounter. And I don't know if people are in general just frustrated right now in the community, but that just seems to be kind of the flavor that at least we're dealing with within PD.
Thanks for that update. Does anyone have any questions for Chief Paul?
Yeah, Chief, did the officer who was struck in the head need medical attention?
He was injured, but he was checked out and he's okay. So thank you for asking. I appreciate that.
And the new body cams that all of your police officers are wearing, they allow you to go back and review these incidents and perhaps learn from them and or review how the incident was handled. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I would say that they're not just helpful, they're amazing, they're incredible. It was so awesome that we were allowed to purchase these. They came at certainly a large cost. But everything you just said, we've done. And they're not only great for being able to dispel complaints, which as a result of this weekend, we did receive some complaints, but we've been able to look at those immediately, firsthand view, and be able to dispel those. And then it will also be great for prosecution. It's one thing to be able to describe that you're trying to break up a fight and you get punched in the side of the head, and it's another thing to actually see how violent those things occur and how those encounters occur and be able to move forward with prosecution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors or staff have any comments or questions? Bill Bell, any updates from the city manager's office we should know about?
Yeah, I think it's just due to the COVID restrictions and changing COVID climate around the community and region. It's important for everybody to know that we'll be transitioning, like we did council work session today, to more virtual, taking one step back from where we were currently. So we'll be transitioning all of our committees, our commission meetings, council meetings, and staff meetings that are over just a couple of people will be held virtually, probably until January at least. Get through the holidays and hopefully things with COVID calm down and get back on track. And then we'll be able to get back to operating, wearing masks, but still face-to-face kind of interaction. But for the next couple of months, we'll be working in a virtual capacity, just to err on the side of safety. Our public works will still be out, providing all the services that they need to be doing. Building and planning are very busy. They'll still be able to work with engineering to get all their work done. And then, of course, the PD will still be operating, but we'll just take it up a notch for safety. We may see in the next one to two weeks, thankfully, it's Thanksgiving week next week, which is slow usually anyway. We'll probably start working behind the glass again here at City Hall for the customer service techs. And across the street at the police department, they're already behind the glass for their customer service. So we're making that transition and probably put that into full effect right after Thanksgiving.
Great. Thank you very much for that update. Counselor Anderson, did I see it?
I just, I just wanted to thank Bill and the staff for being cautious and taking these steps. I listened to the governor's briefing the other day, and things are not as good as they should be. So I think just being cautious and safe to protect our citizens is a good move, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any other further items for discussion? I don't see any. Meanwhile, my laptop timed out, so I don't have my agenda in front of me. But I think that was our last thing. Is that, can someone confirm? Okay, yeah, I got a blank screen in front of me that's not going on. Okay, well, then, in that case, our work session is over. We will have our regularly scheduled city council meeting tomorrow night in this same format at six o'clock. The public is invited to attend. The Zoom link is on the agenda, which is published to the city's website. And if they attend and then they want to make public comment during the public comment period for any item, they can raise their hand on Zoom or with star nine on their phone. And we have great IT staff who then would promote them into the meeting so that they could make their public comment. So I don't want the change in format to affect the public's ability to interact and participate in the public comment portion of our meetings. I think that's really important. And with that, we will adjourn and we'll see you all tomorrow night.